प्रेस रात कर्थरा ईसु कृष्टिविन्नामतनाल निखाले बैडल रोवरोरी वार्ड योर अबेरकरण नाम तलहिले ताल्ती देवन उड़िया प्रसन्नते वरवेट जबिपोम इंग्लैनी सिक्रान बुरच्चरे कर्थरा ईसु कृष्टिवे अप्पा निखाले बैडल उम्रे समहतर के वरंबड़ीक निरिंग्ल के कोड़तिरकर तरणंगर काहे तिरंदा वासल गड़ काहे नंदी सलतु करो मी ईसुवे देवर ईरिंदा बैडल उम्रे करत लोप कड़करो नीरे आज ही सयंबड़ीक अंडवरे उम्रे करंगली लोप कड़करो मापा ईसुवे नीर प्रसन्न आहि इंग्लूलंगले तेचंबड़ीआह इंग्लै अंडवरे उम्रे आन्विनाल निरपंबड़ीआह उमय वेंडे कोल्हुरो मी ईसु राजा विन्न पंगलिन सतते अंडवरे नीर केटरुरो देवरीर अंडवरे सईदिन बैडल इंग्लोड़ कोड़ा इडैप्पड़ो मी ईसुवे आराधनी तुदीन दुनिया केट देवरीर नीर थामे महिलंबड़ीक इजमतीले वारो मी ईसुवे अंडवरे एदे पूंज उलहिंगल उमे नोकी पार्त कोंडरकर जनंगल मतील कुड़ियरकर जनंगल मतील ईसुवे नीर प्रसन्न माहि उलंगले तेचंबड़ीआह एड़पुदले कटरड़बड़ीआह जबिकरो मंडवरा ईसु कृष्टिविन्नामतनाल जबिकरो इंग्लू जीवन उड़ा परमपितावे आमेन नाम देवन नोकी पार्त करनदनाटक लाम देवन नम्मीदा पाराटिन कृभएगळ काहे नंदी सलतुओ मा हाललुव्या नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे हाललुव्या थैंक यू लॉर्ड ईसु राजा उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा करनदनाटक लाम इंग्लै कन्मनी पोल खातीरे उमक स्तोत्रम मंडवरा इंग्लै निन्ने विकोरंदा देवमे उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा उन्नदमानवरे उम्रे सर्टेन मराइविनल वाइथ इंग्लै खातीरे उमक नंदी राजा वेड़नुड़े कन्नीकम भाजकम कोड़े नोकम इंग्लै तप्पवितीरे नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे इंग्लूड़े पोकलम वरतलम बीटलम बैडलम खातीरे उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा नंदी अप्पा ईसुवे उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा इंग्लू बलविनतलम उम्रे बलन पूरणमाय बिरंगिचे उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा इंग्लू के आडेकलमाय इरूदरे दुनया इरूदरे उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा कूपिट बोलदल्ला मरुवत्र वारुड़ी चेदिरे उमक स्तोत्रम मंडवरा उमक स्तोत्रम ईसुवे उमक स्तोत्रम ईसुवे नंदी अप्पा नंदी ईसुवे इंग्लू आथुमनेश्वरे उमक नंदी सलतु करो इंग्लू आथुमनेश्वरे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे हाललुव्या ईसुवे उमक परिमिलाद सित्तमिलाद कार्य एदेनम सिद्रदम आनाल इंग्लै मन्नीम अप्पा वर्विसे कुड़म रत्ततनाल इंग्लै कड़वियरुरो मी ईसुवे ईसु कृष्टिविन्न तिरुरत्तम सहल पावंगली नीक इंग्लै कड़विस्तु तिहरिपदाह ईसुवे नंदी अंडवरा इंग्लै पावं पोकुं परसुतरे उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा इंग्लू मीठ परे उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा ओरवराय परियादी से इंग्ले चेहरे वरे उमय वयर्तु करो सेरकुड़ाद वड़ी दिनल वास्तव पनुरे वरे उमय वयर्तु करो इंग्लू उल्लतल विच्छिरकर वरे ईसु राजावे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा सर्वतर को मधिहारियान वरे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे हाललुव्या हाललुव्या कन्मलयाम कृष्टिवे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा कन्मलयाम कृष्टिवे उमय वयर्तु करो इंग्लू केड़दमे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा इंग्लू नम्बिकये ईसुवे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा इंग्लू जीवने इंग्लू बलने इंग्लू आरंखोटाइम मानवरे उमक स्तोत्रम मंडवरा नित्यय जीवन इंग्लू कारुड़ी चेदिरे उमय वयर्तु करो मी ईसु राजा उमय वयर्तु करो मी ईसुवे उमय पार्कुंबड़ीक उमोड़ कोड़ा पेस्सुंबड़ीक इंग्लू मनकंगले तिरंदीरे इंग्लू अंडवरे अप्पा नावय अंडवरे तुदीनाल निरपिनीरे उमक स्तोत्रम उम्रे सतते केटकुंबड़ीक इंग्लू सभिगले तिरंदीरे उमक स्तोत्रम अंधहार इरुल निन राचरीमान वड़ीक इंग्लै अड़े तान बुनेश्वरे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा इंग्लै अड़े तान बुनेश्वरे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा हाललुव्या इंग्लै अंडवरे अप्पा नागल उमय अरिंद कोल्लुम कोल्लुवधरक मुन्नमे इंग्लै तेरिंद कोंड इंग्लै नेसित अन्न देवमे उमक स्तोत्रम मंडवरा अंडवरे अप्पा इंग्लू बीद उम्रे आन्विप पोलिनीरे उमक स्तोत्रम नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे हाललुव्या प्रेस यू लॉर्ड उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा दुया दुया दुयवरे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे न्हा रिलनक वेरेन वेंडम ईसुवे उम्रे तुदी पाडवे वेंडम एंड रिचल्ली
दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे सीढ़िन कालगड़ कड़ुविनव सेन्नीरालिन उल्लम कड़ुविडुमे सीढ़िन कालगड़ कड़ुविनव सेन्नीरालिन उल्लम कड़ुविडुमे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे परो निनोई हड़े नीकीनव पावी एंड पावन नीकीनीरे पारो निनोई हड़े नीकीनव पावी एंड पावन नीकीनीरे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे दुयरंगल पारिन खाड़िन वरे गुणंगल चांगिन बलन डुवे दुयरंगल पारिन खाड़िन वरे गुणंगल चांगिन बलन डुवे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे ईश्वर पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे परलो फिल्लीड़ मुंडु एंड वरे परिमात एंड श्रेष्ठ वरे परलो फिल्लीड़ मुंडु एंड वरे परिमात एंड श्रेष्ठ वरे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे पुगल पाडवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे
ईसुबे उमय अंडवरे वयर्तु करो नीर तुदिकपड़ तक्कवर राजा नीर पोछपड़ तक्कवर अंडवरे उमय तुदिक्यम तुदिये इंग्लू नाविल वाइथिरे उमक स्तोत्रम नन्मय आनवहिले इंग्लू वार्ड केल पेस्सीनीरे उमक स्तोत्रम हाललुव्या नंदी ईसुवे नीर पुहड़पड़ तक्कवर नीर पोछपड़ तक्कवर ईसुवे हाललुव्या दुयवरे उमय वयर्तु करो तुदिक्य पाठररे उमय वयर्तु करो यल्ला महत्वम उम्रे वरे उमय वयर्तु करो मी ईसु राजा हाललुव्या 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 ईसु ईसु हाललुव्या 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 अंडवरे नंदी अप्पा उमय तुदिक्यम तुदिये नाविले वाइथिरे उमक स्तोत्रम साबंगले उचरित कोंडरुदै इंग्लू नाविले ईसुवे तुदिक्यम तुदिये वाइथिरे उमक स्तोत्रम सत्यमुल्ला वरे तुदिक्यम तुदिये वाइथिरे उमक स्तोत्रम आदिशय मानवरे तुदिक्यम तुदिये वाइथिरे उमक स्तोत्रम हाललुव्या हाललु नंदी राजा नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे इंग्लै कंडीरे उमक स्तोत्रम हाललुव्या हाललुव्या देवरुड़े महत्वंगले पेस्सुंबड़ीक इंग्लू नाविले तुदिये वाइथिरे उमक स्तोत्रम सत्यमुल्ला वार्तहिले पेस्सुंबड़ीक इंग्लू नाविले तुदिये वाइथिरे उमक स्तोत्रम नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे उमक नंदी सलतु करो मंडवरा इन विलहत्तिल इंग्लू के वेरेन वेंडम ईसुवे उम्रे तुदिये सोल्लबेंड उम्रे पुहरे पाडवेंड हाललुव्या हाललुव्या नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे हाललु हाललुव्या इंडे वांझय विरपमल्लाम मी ईसु राजा आयरम आयरम दुदरहोड़ कोड़ा सेर्न सिनेहिले कर्तर परिसुतर 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 एंड तुदी पाडवध हाललु नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे उमय वयर्तु करो मंडवरा प्रेस यू लॉर्ड सीढ़िन कालगड़ कड़ुविनव सेन्नीरालिन उल्लम कड़ुविडुमे सीढ़िन कालगड़ कड़ुविनव सेन्नीरालिन उल्लम कड़ुविडुमे पारिले नक्कु वेरेन्ना वेंडम पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे पुईरुल्ला वारे इल पुगल पाडवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे दुयादि दुयवरे उमदु पुहरे नन्हा डुवे नंदी ईसुवे इंग्लू बलन आहि एकर्थावे उमक स्तोत्रम नन्मय घड़ी नायगने उमक स्तोत्रम मन्नीपदल वाल्ले उमक स्तोत्रम पावंगलरे इंग्लै कड़विनीरे सुतिहरितीरे उमक स्तोत्रम मंडवरा नंदी अप्पा कुचम नीकीनीरे उमक स्तोत्रम इंग्लू बीद सुमंदिरंदा पड़ीगले नीकीनीरे उमक स्तोत्रम येच कोंडीरे नीरे सुमंदिरे नंदी ईसुवे नंदी ईसुवे हाललुव्या 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 इंग्लू कहयावच्चे मऊनमाय सहित कोंडवरे उमक स्तोत्रम हाललुव्या करनदनाटक लाम करनद वर्डत्तिन मादंगलिलाम नमय नन्मय नाल निरप्पी तमुड़े द्रुतीनाल निरप्पी वड़ी नर्तिनारे अति निनेत्त नंदी उड़ थोड़ कोड़ा ईसुवे नंदी इन्नम वर्णाटक ले कथ्तुनिकरो मंडवरा नीरे वड़ी नर्त्तम एंड रिचल्ली इन्हे नर्त्तम ईसु नादा उमक नंदी इनकुल वालम ईसु नादा उमक नंदी प्रेस यू लॉर्ड नंदी ईसुवे करनदनाटक लाम इंग्लै अंडवरे वर्डत्तिन नाटकलिलाम इंग्लै पादहातीरे उमक स्तोत्रम उमक स्तोत्रम इंग्लू इधर नर्त्त कोंडरकर वर्डत्तिल उम्मड़े कृभए इंग्लू चांद इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया ओरी आयवन्दी परी तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया ओरी आयवन्दी परी तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया हरिवन्दिन तेरे खारिकाती उमक नंदी ऐया हरिवन्दिन तेरे खारिकाती उमक नंदी ऐया इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया तेरी वन्दी पाडवैती उमक नंदी ऐया तीरी वन्दी पाडवैती उमक नंदी ऐया ओरी ओरी उलिक्क चिरी उमक नंदी ऐया ओरी ओरी उलिक्क चिरी उमक नंदी ऐया इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया उवाई वालु पूत्त कुड़ंती नलरचीवरे उवाई वालु पूत्त कुड़ंती नलरचीवरे इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया दुयरम नीकी आरु तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया दुयरम नीकी आरु तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया उल्यपल माती आरंधन तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया उल्यपल माती आरंधन तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया कलक्कम नीकी कन्नी तुडैती उमक नंदी ऐया कलक्कम नीकी कन्नी तुडैती उमक नंदी ऐया कोवले माती करत्तारे उमक नंदी ऐया कोवले माती करत्तारे उमक नंदी ऐया इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया पावमिल्ला दुयवालु उवाई वालु पूत्त कुड़ंती नलरचीवरे उवाई वालु पूत्त कुड़ंती नलरचीवरे इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया दुयरम नीकी आरु तंदी दुयरम नीकी आरु तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया दुयरम नीकी आरु तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया उल्यपल माती आरंधन तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया चिंगोर मत माती आरंधन तंदीरे नंद स्तोत्रम आरंधन तंदी उमक नंदी ऐया इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया इन्न नर्त्तु ईसु नादा उमक नंदी ऐया इनकुल वालु इन्दन नेसा उमक नंदी ऐया हाललु नंदी ईसु इम्मट्टूम नर्तिन वरे उमक स्तोत्रम उमक स्तोत्रम हाललुव्या करनद वंद पादीलाम कन्नी मनी पोल इंग्लै खातीरे कन्नी मनी पोल इंग्लै खातीरे कन्नी मनी पोल इंग्लै खातीरे उमक स्तोत्रम मंडवरा हाललुव्या हाललुव्या इन वर्डत्तिन तुवकत्तिल यत्नै बयंगले इंग्ले सुल्दिरंद ईसुवे यत्नै सवालगले इंग्ले सुल्दिरंद नीरो अंडवरे उडमय उड़ वर Neero andavare odme vallavare aai Eengalpacham nindire umakku stotra Hallelujah Velathalidai kattinire umakku stotra Umakku stotra Amen raja Yethanai aavathinindra navare tapu vithire apas stotra Enniladaga nanmayal seethavare Ennacha nanmayal seethavare Enniladaga nanmayal seethavare umakku stotra Kannin manipola kaathire umakku stotra Kannin manipola kaathire umakku stotra Nanji Nanji Yesuvukka nanthi chellavom Nanthi chellavom hallelujah Naagal neepadarko vendi kuduvadarko Adihama isyal pattiire chaidire umakku stotra Hallelujah Hallelujah Yesu Yesu umakku stotra Pulamvalai matri neere Nanji raja Ummadi aanandathanala Paramasandoshathinaalanirathire umakku stotra Paramasandoshathinaalanirathire umakku stotra Unnadavellathinaalanirappinire umakku stotra Engaladakalam aanavare Yaradathil salva Jeevan tharum varthigal Varvuktharum varthigal Ummadathila eevundhe adhey engalakharulichaidire Engalakunithiye jeevanay harulichaidavare umakku stotra Hallelujah Sadha kaalagilam yesu vodukkunirukkum badikku Sitam gondire umakku stotra Umakku stotra Nanji yesubeh Nanji yesubeh hallelujah praise you lord Hallelujah Hallelujah Nanji yesubeh Hallelujah praise you lord Aalivinindra pathu haathavare umakku stotra I stand amazed in the presence of Jesus the Nazarene
Stand amazed in the presence of Jesus the Nazarene And wonder how he could love me As sinners condemned and clean How marvelous, how wonderful My son shall ever be How marvelous, how wonderful Is my Savior's love for me For me was in the garden He prayed on my will not die He had no tears for his own griefs But swears of glad for us How marvelous, how wonderful My son shall ever be How marvelous, how wonderful Is my Savior's love for me My sins and my sorrows He bear with his bearing on He bore the burden to carry And suffered and had it all Saying how marvelous, how wonderful My son shall ever be How marvelous, how wonderful Is my Savior's love for me In me the ransom and glory His face all the class shall see Go be my joy through the ages To sing of his love for me How marvelous, how wonderful My son shall ever be How marvelous, how wonderful How marvelous, how wonderful My son shall ever be How marvelous, how wonderful Is my Savior's love for me
Achchiri maanavumde anbirkaaganaanndrisalathugrom yesubeh Adhisayam aanavare umakku stotra Hallelujah Alavatra anbinaalengaleneesithavare Hallelujah Engalekuchangal neekinavumde anbirkaaganaanndrisalathugrom andavare Engalekuchangalay andavare Manitha umde anbirkaaganaanndrisalathugrom andavare Engaleviduvitha umde anbirkaaganaanndrisalathugrom andavare Nanji yesubeh Nanji yesubeh Achchiri maanavozikengalay aalaita umde anbirkaaganaanndrisalathugrom andavare Hallelujah Engalakahaadiga padaddevaattukutti aanavare umakku stotra Yesu Paavi yethan asutthanindra paradabadikku Irakkam parati neere Tu keedithire umakku stotra Hallelujah khalivinire umakku stotra Kaayam kattinire umakku stotra Umakku stotra Enyesu raja umakku stotra Enyesu raja umakku stotra Hallelujah engalakumariyum sathimum jeevanam aanavare Halosunaiyim velanam aanavare Hallelujah 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 Rankathire melaha Nanji yesubeh Nanji yesubeh Hallelujah 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 Ummade prasunathirkku engale aalaita umde anbirkaaganaanndrisalathugrom andavare Hallelujah Parisutthamaanavumde prasunathirkku Mahimayullavumde prasunathirkku Viduviikara umde prasunathirkku Engaletheethiravumde prasunathirkku Engale aalaitire umakku stotra Engale aalaitire umakku stotra Hallelujah Hallelujah Dhanmarkarude avaliilirundha engale Ummade prasunathirkku aalaitire umakku stotra Paavigalinavaliilanindra engale andavare Yesu vaaavaliilanirukkum badikku Aalaitire umakku stotra Hallelujah Hallelujah Rabathile Pariyasakararoode kodavorkarthirundha engale Singasathila yesu vodukkunharachidire Unnadathila yesu vodukkun Harachidire Nanji yesubeh Naagale emmaathira Naagale emmaathira Ennesakarth Neer viduviikaavudil nerumolamaayirundhrupome Hallelujah Oh oru nodipolladu mengale thangukkunavumde anbirkaaganaanndrisalathugrom yesubeh Hallelujah Engalmi dhiraakkam vaita devanale yalla maayichu Nanji yesubeh Nanji yesubeh hallelujah Yesu Kristuven tiru-rathame enakai chindappatta tiru-rathame
Yesu Kristuven tiru-rathame Enakai chindappatta tiru-rathame Yesu Kristuven tiru-rathame Enakai chindappatta tiru-rathame Yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Enakai chindappatta yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Enakai chindappatta yesu vinratham Paavamilipiticheyum tiru-rathame Parintham prissugisal tiru-rathame Paavamilipiticheyum tiru-rathame Parintham prissugisal tiru-rathame Paarisuttasavuga manugisella Paarisuttasavuga manugisella Veyyum tharum nalathiru-rathame Paayirinapparum nalathiru-rathame Yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Enakai chindappatta yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham
Paadhenelakum engaladu Yesu vinrathame cheyaman aarike cheyguro
Puravakilum tiru-rathame Puravadachidil tiru-rathame Puravakilum tiru-rathame Puravadachidil tiru-rathame Satthi aarikkum nalathiru-rathame Satthi aarikkum nalathiru-rathame Sugam tharum allaya tiru-rathame Sugam tharum nalathiru-rathame Oh engal yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Enakai chindappatta yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Enakai chindappatta yesu vinratham Vaadai vittukul varadirukka Thirikka patta nalathiru-rathame Vaadai vittukul varadirukka Thirikka patta nalathiru-rathame Aalikka vamthavan thoodaadabadi Aalikka vamthavan thoodaadabadi Kaapathiin nalathiru-rathame Engale kaapathiin nalathiru-rathame Yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Enakai chindappatta yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Enakai chindappatta yesu vinratham Poodiya maarkamthatta tiru-rathame Poodu unan padikai tiru-rathame Poodiya maarkamthatta tiru-rathame Poodu unan padikai tiru-rathame Yedhiyam vittutanda tiru-rathame Yedhiyam vittutanda tiru-rathame Milivanay mirutina tiru-rathame Yedhiyam milivanay mirutina tiru-rathame Yesu vinratham Yesu vinratham Enakai chindappatta yesu vinratham 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 Yesu Kristuvin tiru-rathame Enakai chindappatta tiru-rathame Yesu Kristuven tiru-rathame Enakai chindappatta tiru-rathame
Hallelujah araganthila mahamanarama shagarabaloo Nanji yesubeh Neere engalakaasindina umde tiru-rathathirka Nanji yesubeh Nanji yesubeh Nanji yesubeh Engalakaahayavachim sahitukondire maunama Akramangalayallamannithire umakku stotra maadavare Nithiye varvukkeengalay aalaitavare Nithiye jeevan pharumbadikku umde tiru-rathathesundineere umakku stotra Engalakaave enakakaave Nanji Nanji yesubeh Hallelujah hallelujah Naagalsugamaa jeevikumbadikku Ummade kaayangalinthalumgalaalengalai gunappadithineere umakku stotra Nanji yesubeh Ummade tiru-rathathinaaalengalai parushutha padithineere umakku stotra Hallelujah Paavathai parkamandhasuttha kannanengalai parkumbadikaga paavathai neeki parushutha padithineere Hallelujah 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 Ennatthaisalathuvo Engalye tharugrom yesu raja Hallelujah hallelujah Praise you lord Nanji yesubeh Praise you lord nanji appa Nanji yesubeh Ummade rathathinaaalengalai varkelai Naagal aanubavikraya allajathirkaa nanthrisalathugrom andavare Varkelai naagal aanubavikraya allajathirkaa nanthrisalathugrom andavare Ummade rathathinaaalengalai varkelai undaayirukkaya allajathirkaa nanthrisalathugrom andavare Hallelujah Ummade rathathinaaalengalai varkelai sailpaddithire umde magathomaana Wallamai kaaga nanthrisalathugrom andavare hallelujah Nanji yesubeh Nanji yesubeh You serve
My God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. I am God. My God. My God. I am God. My God. My God. My God. Oh, God. My God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. My 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 God. Oh, God. My God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. I am God. I am God. My God. My God. I am God. My God. My God. My God. Oh, God. My God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. I am God. My 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 God. Oh, God. My God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. My 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 God. Oh, God. Jesus. My God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. My God. My God. My God. I am God. My God. My God. My God. Oh, God. My God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. My 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 God. Oh, God. My God. I am God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. I am God. I am God. My God. My God. I am God. My God. My God. Oh, God. My God. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. I am God. I am God. My God. My God. I am God. I am God. My God. I am God. I am God. My God. My God. I am God. My God. My God. My God. Oh, God. My God. Jesus. Oh, God, oh, God, oh, God. Oh, God. Oh, God. I am God. My God. My God. I am God. My God. My God. My God. Hallelujah. I am Jesus. You have been there for us. You have been there for us. You have been there for us. Hallelujah. You have been there for us. You have been there for us. You have been there for us. I am... I am Jesus. I am God. You are a great man. I am grateful to you. I am God. You have been there for us. You have been there for us. You are a great man. You are a great man. I am God. I am God. We will be together. In the morning, I will ask you a question. I will ask you a question. I will ask you a question.
Hebrews Chapter 4 Let us therefore fear lest a promise being left us of entering into his rest, any of you should seem to come short of it. For unto us was the gospel preached, as well as unto them; but the word preached did not profit them, not being mixed with faith in them that heard it. For we which have believed do enter into rest, as he said, I have sworn in my wrath if they shall enter into my rest, although the works were finished from the foundation of the world. For he spake in a certain place of the seventh day on this wise, and God did rest the seventh day from all his works. And in this place again, if they shall enter into my rest, seeing therefore it remaineth that some must enter therein, and they to whom it was first preached entered not in because of unbelief. Again he limited a certain day, saying in David, "Today after so long a time, as it is said, today if ye will hear his voice, harden not your hearts." For if Jesus had given them rest, then he would not have afterwards spoken of another day. There remaineth therefore a rest to the people of God; for he that has entered into his rest, he also has seized from his own works, as God did from his. Let us labour therefore to enter into that rest, lest any man fall after the same example of unbelief. For the word of God is quick and powerful and sharper than any two-edged sword, piercing even to the diving asunder of soul and spirit, and of the joints and marrow, and is the discerner of the thoughts and intense of the heart. Neither is there any creature that is not manifest in his sight, but all things are naked and open unto the eyes of him with whom we have to do. Seeing then that we have a great high priest that has passed into the heavens, Jesus the Son of God, let us hold fast our profession; for we have not an high priest which cannot be touched with the feeling of our infirmities, but was in all points tempted like, as we are, yet without sin. Let us therefore come boldly unto the throne of grace, that we may obtain mercy and find grace to help in the time of need. Amen.
Hallelujah! Kattar nalavara or kirubayenrum alladhi. Indha kaale veelila andhavare, pathi namandhirkunangallarum andhavare samugathal engaloppu koduthu. The jabe veele porupadukam padin the jabe veeleil. Andhavare kipiriyamaa irkathakka engali hrudhe engali. Avare noke pathi jabeikathakka andhavare kirubay engalkanu adhikamaga kodukunna sulli. Oru nimadam engal oru oru andhavare kartaloppu koduthu jabeepam. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare, thahappaname thudikkram, mahime paduthugurum. Andhavare nengakuduthan arumayana naalakkaha nandiseltugurum. Indha naalilum andhavare nangavaikkapura oru vinnappathukum devanage kattar amenrum, amenenrum. Badil kodukapoorathukaha nandriyendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Andhavare nengoruvareyam porumbeyat talluvadillen, pakkurum apaa. Engal jabangala nengappodun talluvadilla, andhavare indha jabathukkun nengabadil kodupadukaha nandri. Thahappana ummadee naamam mahime padumbadi, andhavare engal jabathukkun neng andhavare badil kodupadukaha nandri. Apaa amakkun nandiseltugurum, esothri krumb mahime paduthurum. Innum adhikamaga mahime paduthathakka, innum adhikamaga devan mahime padathakka, engalidhu mahime padathakka andhavare. Innum kirubay engalkaniga taravendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Ummadira kamaengalmeel perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare. Mahime paduthugurum andhavare, devan porupadunga engal oru oruam andhavare porupadunga. Oru orum inandukkulla thakka kirubay kodunga andhavare, oru oru vaailumarundha andhavare. Thahappana vinnappangal aeraadukkathakka andhavare kirubay kodukavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Apaa amakkun nandiseltugurum, oru oru porupadunga, umbada parshutthamana rathatala moodikkollunga andhavare. Andhavare sathru engal parkambothu andhavare vekkapatu odathakka, engal vaigal viravaga thirakkappattien devane aaradikkum, devanathil vinnappikkavum. Andhavare ummada kirubay engalkaniga innum adhikamay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Aavi mandalangal irukrapollada aavigale andhavare thahappana thurathathakka andhavare, engal vinnappangal andhavare thahapmakittu priyamaa irkathakka kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Nangal oru orum andhavare aavigal, andhavare pollada aavigikittu sathru kedirtinikathakka andhavare, kirubay engalkaniga perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Yesuvin naamathil andhavare indha jabathukkun neng keepadukaha nandriyendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthurum. Appdye mudhalavada oru athumakle andhavare kartaloppu koduthu. Ulagathilirka yella athumakalam devanaki, devanakaadaipadithukkulla thakka andhavare kirubay perugunam. Oru rachikapada kirubay perugunam. Ulagathil karengalandharu veduvikkapada vandhum, ulagathin sathruin kailirikka oru oru athumay andhavare kartaloppu koduthu jabeepam. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare, thudikkram apaa. Mahime paduthugurum andhavare, yesappaa andhavare ulagathilikka oru oru athumakalam andhavare karathil vaikkurum. Oru orum rachikapada vandumendu andhavare apaa birumbi andhavare indha adathil andhavare mulangal padittu andhavare jabeikkurum andhavare. Avargale nengarachitukkulla andhavare, ellasathruin thittathil villaki pathugathukkulla andhavare. Andhavare meharyada athumakalam meharyathakka andhavare kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Ummay andhavare purindukkulla thakka andhavare, innum adhika athumakalam andhavare. Arindavargal andhavare mehapa thahappana ummattu villanthiki poada appadie andhavare kirubay peruguttum andhavare. Oru oru athumayam andhavare thahappana ummada parshutthamana rathatala moodugurum andhavare. Rathakkothakal maraikkurum andhavare, yesuve devanandhurachippin kanmalayendu. Andhavare arindukkulla thakka andhavare oru kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Enga ellam andhavare umme patte andhathumakalkusullarangal, andhadathil andhavare rachip undaga vandumendusulli jabeikkurum. Unnaru olavirudheethi oru oru keningataravendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Oru oru athumay porupadunga andhavare, sathru andhavare vekkapatu pogumbadi andhavare. Innum adhikamana athumakal ummanndhwarathakka andhavare kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb mahime paduthurum, devan porupadunga andhavare. Oru oru athumay andhavare karathil vaikkurum andhavare, devan porupadupathukaha nandriyendusulli. Yesuvin naamathil jabeikkurum, jeevanulalapithaave. Hallelujah! Sotthurum. Appdye indha sabayum, anvathilakasabayum andhavare kartaloppu koduthu, kudumangala oppu koduthu. Innum kudumathal adhiga samadanam aarpada vandum. Andhavare sittham neravairumnusulli. Andhakudumam ovvandrayam andhavare kaha mathramavallathakka innu kirubay perugunsulli. Oru oru kurdumuthi andhavare kartaloppu koduthu jabeepam. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare. Thahappaname thudikkram, mahime paduthugurum andhavare, andhavare engal oru kudumathim andhavare karathil vaikkurum. Indhdevanage kattar andhavare ummada paarvika arumayana thirsayuvum. Andhavare ummada paarvika andhavare umma kapiyamaa irukkum andhavare, engal kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Yesappaa angalakun nandiseltugurum andhavare, thahappana denandhaurum andhavare. Umbada pathathil amarundhirundu umme teedathakka andhavare, oru kudumathukum umbada kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Andhavare apaa kudumamaha andhavare inandichabikathakka andhavare kirubay peruguttum. Andhavare kudumamaha inandha andhavare aalathukvarathakka andhavare kirubay peruguttum. Swami Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Andhavare apdye petroorgale andhavare karathil vaikkurum andhavare, apaa thahappana pillagalka podikkambothum, pillagalkum valinadathumbodhum andhavare ummakkulaka umbada varthe kullaaka valinadathakka, oru oru petroorka nengajnanaathak kodukavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare, umbada jnanaathal nirappi vidunga andhavare. Thahappana apaa alibha pillagale andhavare, thahappana nangvalinadathumbodhu, avargale andhavare koba padittu valinadathadapadi andhavare ummada anbinal valinadathakka andhavare. Engal hrudhe engal nengsthrappaduthavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Oru oru kudumathim porupadunga andhavare, kudumathilirka yella thayvilani nengasandikkavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Kudumathilirka andhavare yaharav yaadhilirpaargal andhavare sasthamavargalage yesuvin naamathinada. Andhavare vyadigala gunappaduthugradevan, umbada talumbalala gunamundendusulli irkunna andhavare. Andhavare vyadil oruvaramee laadapadi andhavare paripurnasugathani nengataravendumendusulli. Yesuvin naamathil jabeikkuramengal jeevanulalapithaave. Hallelujah! Sotthurum andhavare. Thudikkram, appdye waliiba pillagalka andhavare jabeepam oru visay. The waliiba pillagal andhavare domathirumbavenum, devane hariyavenum, innum adhikamay. Avargal andhavare pathathil amarundhirikathakka kirubay perugunsulli jabeepam. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare. Indha thahappaname thudikkram andhavare, indha sabayilirka oru waliiba pillagale andhavare karathil vaikkurum. Indhdevanage kattar andhavare, avargal umme teedathakka andhavare kirubay peruguttum. Thunmakran valil nilamal, paavigal andhavare thahappana nikkamal andhavare, pariyasakkarukkarum andhatthil ukharamal, iravum pahalun dianikathakka andhavare, umbada vedaththi dianikathakka andhavare. Kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare. Thudikkram, ulagathukkal avargusellambodhu andhavare, thulagam avargal patrickolaadapadi. Indhdevanndhvaarthainpadi vallathakka andhavare ummada kirubay peruguttum andhavare. Our seegar oru oru khariyathin neng vaikka pandavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Our walkail endamodiweduthaalum andhavare, ummaki priyamay ummada sitthathinpadi mudivale edukathakka. Andhavare avargal kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Innum adhikamay kittisarathakka andhavare kirubay peruguttum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Oru oru waliiba pillagal andhavare, apaa ummakkulaka petrooruk keelpadindirikathakka, andhavare kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Elavachukku melagum umbada vartheekondavargal jeevikathakka andhavare kirubay peruguttum andhavare. Umbada thothargal vayinka andhavare, oru pokrathammalama andhavare. Umbada thothargal munbam, pinbamaha nengvaiipadukaha nandiseltugurum, umbada prasannam avargal soondukkulluvadukaha nandri. Oru oru waliiba neng abishyagan panuvadukaha nandiseltugurum andhavare. Hirudheyam thirakkapadaatum andhavare, oru oru waliibaanirudheyam thirakkapada vandumendusulli jabeikkurum. Indhdevan hariyaraaruvil valarathakka andhavare kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare, mahime paduthugurum andhavare. Indhdevane oru oru waliiba nuudaiyam andhavare, ummada naamamundre mahime padumbadi, yesuve ummada karathil oppu kodukurum. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare, mahime paduthugurum andhavare. Indhdevanndhjabathukketthukaha nandiseltugurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Mahime paduthugurum, hallelujah, appdye noor missionerikale thanga thakka innum adhikamay. Engal oru oru, oru oru karangalum bellapada, bellapada thakka kirubay perugunsulli. Andhavare mischederimaa seera uuliyam aasiruvadikapadaavundusulli. Our seera oru oru karimun devanaki priyamaa irukavundusulli koduthu, oppu koduthu jabeepam. Hallelujah! Sotthurum andhavare. Indha thahappaname thudikkram, mahime paduthugurum andhavare. Andhavare andhnoor missionerimargale andhavare karathil vaikkurum. Avargal thanga thakka engal karangal andhavare thahappana bellapada vandumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Andhavare avar seera oru uuliyathin neng aasiruvadinga andhavare, seera karangal vaikka pandinga andhavare. Ummaki priyamana uuliyansayathakka andhavare kirubay putga andhavare. Andhavare varugra athumakale andhavare, apaa ummaki priyamay nadathathakka andhavare. Avargal manakkangal thirakkapada vandumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthurum. Me thudikkram andhavare, mahime paduthugurum apaa, nandri swami. Hallelujah! Sotthurum andhavare. Nandri, hallelujah, appdye indha desaththakha andhavare jabeepam, indha desaththi andhavare kartaloppu koduthu. Devanaki priyamana oru desamay maharanam, our sitthamathram than desathin nadaperavundusulli. Ahalgasirulapahalimenta andhavare kartaloppu koduthu, andhavare kipiriyamalaada enda khariyathim, sattamay avargal konduvaraadapadi, devan avargalki jnanaathak taravendumendusulli. Oppu koduthu jabeepam. Hallelujah! Sotthurum andhavare. Thahappaname thudikkram, mahime paduthugurum andhavare. Andhavare indha desaththi ummada karathil oppu kodugurum andhavare, yesappaa. Andhavare indha desam yella yangu andhavare, ummada parshutthamana rathatala moodapada namay andhavare. Indha desathukaha nang oru oruam andhavare mulangal padittu jabeikathakka, innum jabe aavi neng uttrivedavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Oru oru sabayum andhavare, apaa indha desathil oru oru sabayum andhavare. Indha desathukaha jabeikathakka kirubay kodunga andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthurum andhavare. Thudikkram andhavare, hallelujah, nandiseltugurum andhavare. Andhavare parlimentum andhavare karathil vaikkurum andhavare, indhdevanage kattar andhavare ahalgasirugale andhavare. Neng andhavare ummada karathil vaiithi neng nadathavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Andhavare ummaki priyamalaada enda khariyamam andhavare sattamaha avumlakakonduvaraadapadi. Indhdevanndhkirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare. Thahappaname thudikkram, indha desathikidraga sathru konduruyalla thittangalam nirummalamagattam yesuvin naamathinada. Andhavare ummaki priyamalaada enda khariyamam andhavare, enda paavamam andhavare, vikrangal ellam, ahattrapadaavattum yesuvin naamathinada. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare. Devan porupadunga, valinadathinga andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthurum. Appdye ellasabegale andhavare karathil oppu koduthu, ulagathilirka oru sabayum andhavare karathil oppu koduthu. Uuliyargale andhavare karathil oppu koduthu, viswasiilam andhavare karathil oppu koduthu. Appdye andhavare kipiriyamay nadathukkullavam, andhavare sitthatharindu avargal oodavam. Andhavare oottham odi modiyambothu, thannu dekreetathai avargal petrukolathakka, oodathakka avargalki andhavare jnanaamum, kirubayum, bellenum, dhairiyamum, andhavare taravendumendusulli jabeepam. Naan vinaga oodinennanu solladapadi, andhavare oodugra oru oruam andhavare karathil oppu kodukurum andhavare. Indhdevanage kattar andhavare ummada kirubay avargal perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Oru oru uuliyakharalim andhavare karathil vaikkurum andhavare. Indhdevanndh sitthathinpadi oodathakka andhavare ummada kirubay peruguttum. Andhavare thahappanamekun nandiseltugurum, oru oru uuliyakharalim andhavare visesitha abishyagathani neng vaihtirupadukaha nandri. Naan idarkahaave abishyagan pannapattain, idarkahaave andhavare prasannam enne moodikkondirikrendu, arindu unarundu oodathakka andhavare kirubay kodunga andhavare. Vinanai enda khariyathim andhavare palipidathilmeel konduvaraadapadi. Indhdevanndhkirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Apaa amakkun nandriyendusulligurum andhavare. Oru oru uuliyakharalim porupadunga, oru oru sabayum porupadunga. Andhavare apaa ummada parshutthamana rathatala andhavare thahappana nengasambagale sambharithingale andhavare. Indhdevanage kattar andhavare siluvaile irukkambothu andhavare, khattpa evedhanepaduvadipoala andhavare. Engal oru oru neng emittukundingale andhavare, engal kahaave rathansintheningale, engal kahaave addikapattingale andhavare. Indhdevanage kattarada ninnevakurundha andhavare. Engal hrudheyam andhavare ummayavettu andhavare, indhu uuliyargal andhavare, hrudheengal andhavare ummayavettu thirumbadapadi. Andhavare ummanndhmathram thirumbirikathakka kirubay peruguttum andhavare. Endasoolnalayalam andhavare thahappana ummada vartheemadathram prasangikathakka andhavare ummada kirubayum bellenum undaga vandumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Apaa amakkun nandriyendusulligurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Mahime paduthurum, oru oru uuliyakharalim neng porupadunga andhavare. Oru oru viswasiilani neng porupadukavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Enga ellam andhavare, andhavare aaradhanegal nadakuda messagegal kodukapadaadu. Andhadathil andhavare oru oru viswasiilam manakkangal thirakkapada vandumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Avargal vartheekakeekambothu andhavare, varthe jeevanal varthe petrukolathakka andhavare. Andhhrudheengal thirakkapadaatum yesuvin naamathinada. Yesu Kristvin naamathinada, hrudheengal thirakkapada vandumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Manakkangal thirakkapada vandumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare, mahime paduthurum. Oru manadhin nahaviyani neng kattal edavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Vinanasindhey kondu vandha andhavare sabayil ukharaadapadi andhavare. Ummay mathram noke parkathakka kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum andhavare. Indhdevane, hallelujah, sotthri krumb, porupadunga, valinadathinga andhavare. Apaa amakkun nandriyendusulligurum. Nandri andhavare, hallelujah, sotthri krumb andhavare, thudikkram apaa, mahime paduthugurum. Nandiseltugurum, appdye enga enga sabay uuliyakharak kudumaththi andhavare kartaloppu kodukum. Andhavare aga kattar innum mallamayoodum, needyoondu, nidhanathoodum avargal nadaathakka. Andhavare ummada kirubay peruguttum, mallamaya ellambi prakasikathakka. Our seera oru oru uulithil devan priyapadaathakka, andhakudumam priyamaa irkathakka, kudumam seera uuliyam aasiruvadikapada. Andhuvuliyamanegarak aasiruadum arikathakka, andhavare innum bharelpadathia andhavare nandathavendusulli avar karathil oppu koduthu. Ellasabegal sandikkapadaavendusulli andhavare kartaloppu koduthu jabeepam. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb andhavare. Thahappaname thudikkram andhavare, apaa amakkun nandri, uuliyindha sabayilirka, uuliyargal andhavare karathil vaikkurum andhavare. Indhdevanage kattar avar seera oru oru khariyathin neng vaikka panduvadukaha nandri. Andhavare seera oru oru prasangamum andhavare ummaki priyamay irupadukaha nandri andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Andhavare kudumamaha seera oru oru uulithyam devan andhavare thahappana, andhavare ummaki priyamay nadathukkullatha, priyamay sayathakka andhavare, innum jnanaathal nirappi andhavare bellapadithi, neng aasiruvadipadukaha nandriyendusulligurum andhavare. Hallelujah! Sotthri krumb. Mahime paduthugurum andhavare, devanndh naamamundre, yesuvin naamamundre mahime padumbadi. Innum andhavare neng eduthu payanpaduthapoorathukaha nandiseltugurum. Hallelujah! Sotthurum. Mahime paduthugurum. Appdye indha naalil andhavare vartheekondurudhasana apakkadathil oppu koduthu. Our prasangikra oru oru vartheem devan kettu. Devanndh naamamahime padumbadi, indhadathil avar prasangikakporu oru vartheengal hrudheengal thirundukeekathakka, engal oru oru khaavir kirubay pakodukavendusulli jabeikkurum, jabeepam. Our kondurvartheel nanga indhanthiinam vandhi verumanen nangthirumanen solladapadi. Andhvartheepetrukondusallathakka andhavare kirubay peruguttum, jabeepam. Hallelujah! Sotthurum andhavare. Thahappaname thudikkram, mahime paduthugurum, indhdevanage kattar andhavare, apaa ummada vartheekondurudhasana andhavare karathil vaikkurum. Umbada parshutthamana rathatala moodikkollunga andhavare. Umbada prasannam nirandhavare prasangikathakka andhavare kirubay kodunga. Umbada abishyagathal nirathivaidirikinnyadarkaha nandiseltugurum andhavare. Idarkaha andhavare indhadathil neng konduvandingalo andhavare andheneenigal. Andhavare apaa thahappana adhenigal niravetchi antpothukaha nandiseltugurum. Indhadathil andhavare, neng ennasitthankundingalo avar prasangikathakka message kodukathakka, andhovorvartheem andhavare thahappana, andhavare indhartheel kuravyapadaadapadi andhavare prasangikathakka andhavare kirubay kodunga andhavare. Thahappana ummakkun nandiseltu, adhakeekran nangal yavaram, adhpetrisallathakka andhavare kirubay kodunga. Andhavare andhvarthee andhvaram muludam andhavare kirigasayathakka ummada kirubay perugavendumendusulli jabeikkurum. Andhvartheeooda engal manakkangal thirakkapadaatum, engal devan innum hariyaraaruvil valarathakka engal kirubay kodunga andhavare. Vartheekondu andhavare, apaa andhvaram muludam andhjeevikathakka, andhavare andhvartheelal jeevanalvarthee nangpetrukondu, adhinnpadi vallathakka andhavare kirubay perugunsulli. Yesuvin naamathil jabeikkuran, jeevanulalapithaave.
Praise the Lord everyone. Can't hear anyone. Praise the Lord. I still can't hear you. Praise the Lord. Much better. How are you all doing today? Good? Good, good. Okay, so we're gonna sing "Thank You Lord" to worship God in English. So if you don't mind standing up with me and just singing along, there's this Bible passage that I want to read first from 2 Thessalonians, sorry, 1 Thessalonians, Chapter 5, verses 16 to 18, which says, "Rejoice always, pray without seizing, and everything give thanks; for this is the will of God in Christ Jesus for you." So the Bible says, rejoice always, no matter what happens, pray without seizing, never stop praying, and in everything give thanks. So whether you're going through good or bad, whether you're in your highs or your lows, give thanks. So we're gonna sing "I Come Before You" today. And there's this one part in this song that I really like, and it goes, "For all the blessings that I cannot see..." There are many times where we don't see the blessings that we have. There are many times where things happen, and you think, "Ah, why is this happening?" And later on, you're like, "Thank you, Jesus, because if this hadn't happened, my life would have been somewhere else." So many times, we don't see the blessings that God gives us. And later on, it says, "You took my sin and you took my shame; you took my darkness and gave me your light." To be in light, you had to be in darkness. And to have your shame and your sin removed, you had to have sin and shame. So no matter what situation you're in, rejoice always, pray without seizing, and give thanks to God. So let's sing this song together.
I come before you today, and there's just one thing that I wanna say. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. For all you've given to me, for all the blessings that I cannot see. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. With a grateful heart, with a song of praise, with a last stretch of love, I will bless your name. Thank you, Lord. I just wanna thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I just wanna thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. For all you've done in my life, you took my darkness and gave me your light. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. You took my sin and my shame. You took my sickness and healed all my pain. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. With a grateful heart, with a song of praise, with a last stretch of love, I will bless your name. Thank you, Lord. I just wanna thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I just wanna thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. With a grateful heart, with a song of praise,
Can I see the youth open their mouth and sing? Eric? Abhishek?
Thank you, Lord. I just wanna thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord. I just wanna thank you, Lord. Thank you, Lord.
Amen, amen. So in everything, rejoice always, pray without seizing, and give thanks. Amen.
Preshmam, kattara Yesu Kristvin naamathinada, marbadiyam, oru oru warthi varabairkaran. Online engalodukudai nindhirpirananal, umgriyam. Yesu Kristvin naamathinada, varabairkram. Jeevanuladheyamndeshabay, umgriyavare varabairkaraadu. The vela, naan annuncement chalathran, saachi solavirumbhagaval, adhikantayathiparthikollum madhyakkattakollugiran. The varthan koodukkaygal, varakkumpolulathu, ondram kudayathu. Neknera Christmas service. Inge, indhadathla, 2010, 11:00. Nadayparam, adhe pola, Saint Richard's Church le, 2010:24. Sorry, Saint Richard's, Hamton Week Baptist Church le, vaithin nadayparam angai. Adhay thodanada, aspenbada, haanamakun new year service, adhe pola, 30:00. Inge, Pin Halli le, vaithe, 11:00. Angai, Saint Richard's Church le, vathu, 11:00. Indraiki sangalam, Hanworth le, madhyam, 2:00. Nayira Radhanay, epolatho, 4:00. Analindraiki mathram, 2:00. Marandhavudavannam. Saachi solavirumbhagavale, ivranam undhal, monbadaha varum madhyakkattakollugiran.
Andhavare, prasanta namathikke stotthram. Indha velaile, andhuruvasanam, neekunappattapi, unsaagodaranai gunappaduthu, ennavasanathoda, indhadathle, andhavarekki, andhavare naamaththi, indhayrudi, andhadi nirudhipaudhi le, naan mahime padutha virmbran. Ennanda, oru ponney pudamuduvadai pola, andhavarengalai pudamutti, andh, adhe oru idathle, naan vasikkimbothu, andhponney edukkimbothu, hrudiyaga, pudamudugalodiya mouham, andhponle, thirira neerathle, andh, pudamudhal, sarayana nilai, enbadha, avar unandukolluvaram. Reninatkaluk munala kodha, andhavare andh, evvelavutthuram, devanudiya vartheem, aurudiya prasannamum, engalai pudamutti nadathukkaraadu, enradhuku, than idanasolran. Anraiki, 2008 maandu, edutha vedapustagam, indraiki varaikim, andh pudamudugra, andhveelya, evvelavu alahai, enin nerai vetchinadu, adhakaha naan andhavarekun nandiselturanandi. Reninmonunatkaluk munala, oru nerukkavana sooalala, enakku, oru, chila, karim, enakku, oru avasaraman, oru thava, oru nerukkadi irundadu. Andhanerathala, unmela, oru anidiana khariyathinpadi, naan oru, anidiana oru nilailol, manidanaala, kashappadurukake, ennudi oru saga, andh udavisarun, naloral, thana, naan chunnar, oru vartha, ippidi irunda, adh nalaa irukkum, umgulukka adh easya irukkum andh, andh sambavangala, naan valipadaya, sollavirumbela. Ananuunmayaavandhu, enavayaadha, arikker, adhimena, manasalan, annechana, omum. Unmayaappadi, irunda, nalandaanandu, ananandh, sindha, andh ennudi, manasila, ninachasindha, adhanan ninachitupri, narandu, varan, enadathle, andhavare, ketta, madhri irundhadi. Neenaitthasindai sarayanaada, andh sindha saraya. Avasolrar, unudien, kaan, nerangal, andh, thavan, andh, nila, nerukkamai, irukku, ananisindhitthasindai saraya, andh sollake, than, naan ninaitthupada, andh sindhai, kristvin sindhai illa, adh vandha, ennudi, sooalnilaike, enanerukkathik, ipri, narakkade, enndanilaiila, vandho, oru, maamisasindha. Uddiyala, naan, vasanathai vasikkimbothu, andhvasanamum, andhdevankatthakalviyum, sarayaga irundadu, appadan, naan, andhavare, thloppukottain, oppu koduthain. Andhavare, innum, ennudi, andh, sindhai, kristvin sindhaike, neerai, varugradhuku, enak, innum, pudamudhal, vandhum, andhavare, endoppu koduthain. Avar oru wonderful counselor, andh, adhayim, naan sulli. Andhavare, mathram, sarandhu, endasooalnilaigalile, amarai mathram, nambi, ennudi, walkai, naan oppu koduthain. Anraiki, ennudi, karaththai, piditha, andhavare, indha, 2023 varailum, enak, avar oru, tani, aalosagarai, irundha. He was a single soul. Whether I was struggling, or I was tired, or I was crying, he was there until today. Without his help, I couldn't help him. I thank him for changing my life. He is a merciful God. He is a merciful God. I thank him for changing my life.
I pray to God. Who is there? Is there anyone? Amen. The Lord is the God of our lives. A great joy. We're going to continue our meditation. We're going to continue our meditation. Reverend John Jebas Allen. He's here. 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 I hope you can ask him.
In the name of Jesus, I pray.
I greet you all in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ.
In these days, I pray for you.
I rejoice for the opportunity God has given to share His word in your midst.
During the Christmas season, we're going to continue our meditation on how we can be good Christians. If you've been here before, we're going to ask you how you've behaved.
If you had attended yesterday's service, we meditated on what type of gift God has given us.
The Lord has given us a gift in Jesus Christ.
He's given us salvation.
He's given us salvation.
He has given us God's presence.
When we understand these gifts and we accept them, our life changes.
There is a very funny story that they quote.
A mother, who has a young daughter, gave her a gift.
A son gifted a talking parrot to his aged mother.
She spoke very well.
And the parrot can speak really well.
But she surprised him. The child just wrote a note. Talk to this bird, you will be surprised.
And in order to surprise his mother, he didn't tell her that it was a talking parrot. He just sent it with a note that said, "Talk to this bird and you'll be surprised."
He waited a few days, and then he didn't hear back from his mother, so he enquired and asked her what happened. He said, "It was a very tasty bird. I cooked it and I ate it." When we don't understand why the gift has been given and we use it incorrectly, this is what happens. So the gift that God has given us should be used correctly. Because this Christmas season is very important for Christians. When we celebrate it in the right way, God's name will be glorified. Because many people say that Christmas should not be celebrated. But during our lifetime, we should celebrate Christmas. Because this becomes an opportunity for us to share the gospel with others. In the early church, the reason why they celebrated Christmas, the birth of Christ was- First, to remember that the Lord Jesus came into this world. When he came into this world, it is to share with others that he came into this world to fulfill the Old Testament prophecies. At the same time, it's also to prepare us for his second coming. So we need to keep both these things in mind. If we only think about what happened 2,000 years ago, it will not be a complete Christmas. And that is why I like the youth's performance yesterday. Because it was a complete picture of the story. It was an illustration of the entire life of Jesus. Usually during the Christmas season, they usually show the nativity scene, but they miss out on everything else. But they also showed about Jesus's death and resurrection, and also sang about the second coming of Christ. This is not just a time for celebration, but also a time for us to prepare us for his second coming. We should use these celebrations to prepare ourselves for the Lord's second coming. In 1954, A man of God named C.S. Lewis wrote this short piece. He's from this country. Many of you may have heard about him. If you watched or read The Chronicles of Narnia, he's the author of those books. He wrote Xmas and Christmas.
He wrote a piece called Xmas vs. Christmas.
In that day, he said, "Two different kinds of gifts are given in this town."
In 1954 itself, he wrote down that there are two types of celebrations happening in this country.
One is Xmas, which is where the celebration is at the heart of everything. And another type of celebration is Christmas, where Christ is at the center of everything. If you Google Xmas vs. Christmas, C.S. Lewis, it comes up with a two-page article. You can read it. He talks about many things in that article. People prepare themselves for the celebration about fifty days in advance. They run and buy the Christmas cards to give to others. When they come home, when they receive a card from people that they have sent a card to, they're very happy to receive it. If they get a card from someone they haven't sent a card to, they panic and they run around to buy another card to send them. They buy lots of gifts. Even in that, they're having to guess. How much will this person gift me, and I have to reciprocate in life? I shouldn't give more or less. I should give something of the same value. He speaks of many things like this, and then he says, "At the end of it all, on Christmas Eve, everyone's exhausted." By the time it comes to Christmas, they spend most of the day sleeping, and they wake up around midday. And after that, they continue with Christmas dinner, and that's the end of it. And he says, "Only a small group of people wake up early in the morning to go to church and to seek and worship God." In these days, there is the Christmas that has become a business approach. On the other hand, we have spiritual Christmas. Which one are you preparing to celebrate? The commercialized Christmas or the spiritual Christmas? With these things in mind, we're going to meditate on a few things. She turned your Bibles to the Gospel of Matthew, chapter twenty-three. In this portion, we read about a group of people. The scribes. The Pharisees. And the rabbis who used to teach the word of God in those days. Jesus is saying a few things about these people in this portion. When we read this or meditate on this portion, we can think about how our life is. This is a very apt thing to do during this Christmas season. Many times, we think about outward things when we prepare for Christmas. How many lights can I put up? How big a Christmas tree can I accommodate? And how big a party can I organize? Or how much, what kind of Christmas jumper can I put on? When I was traveling on the train yesterday, about more than ninety percent of the people on the train were dressed up in some kind of Christmas attire. All of these things are outward, outward things. But how many people are preparing for Christmas with prayer? About ten years ago, they conducted a survey in the United States on what is Christmas. Majority of the young people responded by saying it's the birthday of Santa Claus. They didn't even know it was the birth of Christ. And this is the situation we are in right now. Everyone's holding on to the outward- But they don't know about Jesus. And our responsibility is to tell them about Christ. And even the small group that Jesus speaks to is on a similar boat. The scribes and the Pharisees. In verse three, Jesus says this about them, "They say and they do not." So Jesus says, "Whatever they teach you, observe and do it, but don't do what they do. Do not follow their works." Because they're hypocrites. From verse thirteen onwards, Jesus repeatedly uses the phrase, "Worren to use scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites." During this Christmas season, we need to assess our lives. Are we like these people, like these scribes and Pharisees? What do we need to do so that we don't end up like them? How should our inward man be changed? In Matthew 2:2, some Christian scholars came to Jerusalem. In the Gospel of Matthew, chapter two, a few days after Jesus is born, the wise men come to Jerusalem to see him. And they ask Herod, "Where is he that is born king of the Jews?" And Herod immediately gathers all the chief priests and scribes. In verse four, it says, "He demanded of them where Christ should be born." And they said to him, "In Bethlehem of Judah." Immediately after that, we see that they quote the scripture and they tell him where Jesus will be born. They knew where he would be born. They knew which prophecy would be fulfilled through his birth. But when the same Jesus Christ came and stood before them, they were unwilling to accept him. We can ask people who are attending churches, we can ask them the same question. If I start a verse, I'm sure you can finish it. If we ask for the reference of a verse, we're able to find it. But are we walking according to those words? That is the question God poses to us today. That is the same question Jesus poses to the scribes and Pharisees. From Matthew 22 onwards, we see that many people come up to Jesus and question him. And on one such occasion, when a scribe comes up to Jesus and questions him, Jesus responds to him in the Gospel of Mark, chapter twelve, when he says, "You are not far from the kingdom of God." He says, "You are not far from the kingdom of God." At the same time, he's also not within the kingdom of God. He's near it. There is a chance for you to come in. But you're not quite there yet. You know everything, but you're not walking according to what you know. Let's turn back to the Gospel of Matthew. Let's stay on Matthew, chapter twenty-three. We see here that they're holding on to the wrong aspects of the word, misinterpreting the word of God, and they're holding on to that, and they don't want to change their view of it. They're letting go of the core essence of the word of God, and they're not focusing on holding on to that, but they're holding on to everything else. Let's read verse twenty-three. "Worren to use scribes and Pharisees, hypocrites, for you paid tithe of mint and anise and cumin, and have omitted the weightier matters of the law, judgment, mercy, and faith." When they buy the cumin and other spices, they are very careful to pay a tithe of that. If your pastor comes into your house today and starts measuring all the rice and pulses you have at home and says, "Have you paid?" If your pastor comes into your house today and starts measuring all the rice and pulses you have at home and says, "Have you paid a tithe from all of this?", how do you feel? But that is what they were doing. But they let go of judgment and mercy. What does Jesus say here? He says, "These ought ye to have done and not to leave the other undone." What he's saying is, you're holding on to everything that is, that suits you, but whatever is difficult, you're letting that go. When we look at history. The ten commandments were expanded to cover six hundred and seventeen command, six hundred and thirteen commandments by the pharisees. So an example would be if we took the commandment that says, "You have to honor the Sabbath," they added sub-points to that to say how the Sabbath should be honored. How far a person can walk on the Sabbath day? How much weight can they carry on the Sabbath day? If they carry more than that, they'll break the law. And that's why Jesus says, if your sheep or animal falls into the ditch, won't you pick it up? But why is it that you find fault when I heal a man on the Sabbath day? These are extra commandments. Just for the sake of, you know, making it more strict. This is what we see in this portion. And Jesus opposes this practice. And when we read the gospels, we read repeatedly that Jesus says, "Understand the word of God, understand the scripture correctly and follow it." He says, "Don't just look at the letters, look at the essence of what's behind that." Jesus says, "The law says, 'Thou shalt not commit adultery,' don't just look at that, but look beyond that and see that lust, looking at a woman lustfully is also equivalent to adultery." The reason I'm giving all this background is that in the life of Christians, such things make, enter into our lives. People who drive will be aware that there are some areas called the blind spots. The mirrors can only show you so much and certain areas you'll have to look for yourself to know if something is there or not. You don't have, that issue is not. But back in India, when you're driving, you'll have motorbikes all, you know, very close to you on either side and you have to drive very carefully. I believe it's the same way in Sri Lanka as well. If you're not careful and if you don't check the blind spot and you just rely on what the mirrors show you and you take a turn, then you'll hit the person next to you. Similarly, there are times when the blind spots in our lives are increasing without our knowledge. There's a small story that goes, two friends went on a picnic. They took a lot of food in their picnic basket and they were walking along the road by a village. There was a huge curve coming up. As they were turning on the curve, one of the friends said, "We walked quite a distance, so let's just sit down and eat." And the first friend said, "Let's sit down by this tree." And the other friend said, "No, no, not by the tree, I think we should sit right in the middle of the road." They were debating this for a very long time. And there was a long argument and the second friend won the argument and he, so they, you know, set up a picnic right in the middle of the road. Suddenly, a car came on that road and very, very fast and it took a turn. And just as the driver was turning, coming around the bend, he saw that two people were sitting in the middle of the road. He tried to swerve away from them and he went and hit the tree. And the second friend said, "See, this is why I said, let's not sit under the tree, had he been, had he been sitting under the tree, the car would have hit us." He never realized what he did wrong. Even in the midst of that, he was very proud that he saved his friend's life. Many times in Christian, in our Christian living, this is how we are as well. We don't realize what mistakes we're making. But we're very good at assessing everybody else's faults. This is exactly what the scribes and pharisees were doing here. They're assessing everybody else's mistakes to the most minute detail, but they're not realizing their own mistakes. This is the same way the devil derails us from our course in our life. The same C S Lewis has written another small book. Young people should definitely read it. The name of the book is The Screw Tape Letters. This book is, the way the book is set up is that a senior demon or a senior devil writes a letter advising a junior devil. So the junior devil has been assigned a person to derail away from Christ. So the junior devil occasionally writes letters to the senior devil, asking for advice on how to deal with certain things. So one time, the junior devil writes a letter saying, "This man keeps praying a lot, what do I do? Should I stop him from praying?" So the senior writes a response. Don't disrupt his prayer. Because immediately, when you do that, immediately everyone picks up and says, "He's not praying." So then everyone will start putting him on the right track, saying, "You need to pray." Let him pray. While he's praying, you disrupt his thoughts and put something else in his mind. How many times are we distracted by so many other things, the minute, the minute we kneel down to pray? The way the devil derails us from our course is not by throwing big sins into our lives, but by, but by confusing and adding little things in our lives. We should be thinking and meditating on Christ and celebrating him. That is why the name itself breaks down as Christmass. But so many things have been added into this and now Santa Claus is in the center of it. Everywhere we see, we, more importance is given to how big a Christmas tree can, how big a tree can be set up and how much it can be decorated. In many places, there's not even a service on Christmas day. And if, when we ask them, "Why not?", they say, "That is a day to be spent with family and so we can't have a service on that day." We forget about Christ and we celebrate his birth in many other ways. Yesterday, in the men's drama, we saw how they, Joshua celebrated a father's birthday. I thought back to my children's birthdays. Until the children are reaching the age of three, the parents have to organize the birthday party. And slowly after that, they start demanding, "This is how I want my party to be." Until the age of three, though we do everything the way we want, we invite our friends, we order the cake that we like and we do things our way. This is exactly how we treat Jesus's birthday on Christmas day, we want to do things our way and if the child cries, we find a way to get rid of the child and carry on with the celebration. Let's read verse five. But all their works, they do to be seen of men. They make broad their phylacterys and enlarge the borders of their garments and love the uppermost rooms at feast and the chief seats in the synagogues. They've forgotten about God and they have made themselves the center of all things. They're doing everything that other people should see it. Many times, we do the same thing when it comes to Christmas. We do certain things so that other people can see it. If that is how we're celebrating Christmas, that is not a Christmas that God is pleased with. At the same time, if we keep Jesus at the center. And if we do everything to glorify the name of, to share the gospel with others, then the name of God will be glorified. Because the Christmas season is a good time and the right time to share the gospel with others. I grew, I was born and grew up in a village called Manargudi next to Tanja. In our entire street, we were the only Christian family. But only during Christmas time, we, we could give a cake to the, to the others in the street and tell them about Christ. During the rest of the year, there's nothing much we can do. During Christmas time, though, when the people from the church come around for carol rounds, the entire street gathers towards Santa Claus. That is an opportunity for them to hear the word of God. But if we make the most of that opportunity and we invite them into the house and we give out speech to the children and we tell them, "We're going to pray, but you can stand here and take part," then that is an opportunity for them to hear the word of God. We can do even more in this country. Because everybody has a Christian name, but they don't know anything about Christ. Here, we can invite them for Christmas dinner. Or we can organize a party and use at least five minutes of that party to share about Christ. And that is something that will bring glory to the name of God. So we need to think about our intentions and our external celebrations. When these two things align, the name of God will be glorified. Not only that, during these days, we have to assess ourselves. Let's read from verse twenty-four onwards. "You blind guides." "They strain out a nut and swallow a camel." "They strain out a nut, but they swallow a camel." Jesus seems to have a good sense of humor. Verse twenty-five, "Worren to use scribes and pharisees, hypocrites, for you may clean the outside of the cup and of the platter, but within, they are full of extortion and excess." Verse twenty-seven, he says, "You are like unto white sepulchers." The message he's conveying through all of these statements is outwardly, everything looks perfect and beautiful, but on the inside, it's corrupt. How do we fix this? When we self-examine ourselves. When we think about what the word of God says and how our life is and think about how our life needs to be changed, we can bring about a change in our inward man. In the early church. Before the Christmas, before Christmas day, they used to fast and pray for fifty days in preparation for Easter. Just like we have the Lenten days before Easter, they used to have a period of fasting before Christmas. This is Christmas fasting time. Even now, if you speak to people from orthodox churches, they will say, "This is the time of Christmas fasting." Even now, if you speak to people from Orthodox churches, they will say this is the time of Christmas fasting. But the way we have changed it is we have turned it into Christmas feasting. I really like the tradition of the early church because even these days should be a time where we examine ourselves and set ourselves right leading up to Christmas. We have to think about whether our life is worthy to receive Christ into it. We have to think about whether we have hypocrisy in our life. We have to think about whether there are any blind spots in our lives without our knowledge. This is necessary. In the early church, they used to baptize believers twice in a year. One is on the sixth of January, immediately after Christmas, which is the day that they remember Jesus's baptism. And the second one is the day of where we remember Jesus's resurrection. And for this purpose, they used to fast for fifty days or forty days. Even now, in Orthodox churches, if you inquire, you will find that the Christmas day celebration is also on the sixth of January. Because for them, the celebration aspect is not the priority. Their priority is to prepare new believers for baptism. The entire church will fast and pray for the people who have committed to be baptized. And those who are taking baptism, prepare themselves with prayer. This is the priority. As Christians, we know why we are celebrating Christmas. But if we gather and we celebrate with each other, there is no point. But these celebrations should be ones that reflect Christ. Our lives should be lives that reflect Christ. Either we are Christians or we are not Christians, there is no option in between. Many times, we are happy to accept and do things that are easy for us to do, but we, whatever is difficult, we don't want to follow it. If that is how our life is, then Jesus, when he sees us, he will address us as hypocrites. So, at this time, let's think about our own lives. Let this Christmas season be a time where we fix our lives. Not just that, as I said before, let's use this time to prepare ourselves for the second coming of Christ. Think about it now, how are you planning to celebrate? What are you going to do? What gifts are you going to give? Will all of these things be things that reflect Christ? Will they be things that glorify God? Will someone know Christ when we do these things? If you ask these questions before you prepare anything for Christmas, you can bring many people to Christ. Not just knowing the Bible. Let's commit ourselves to also walk according to it. Each day, we should self-examine. We should keep checking and making sure that Christ is at the center of our lives. When Sister shared the testimony, she said, "The mind of Christ, that touched me." Do we have that mind of Christ? Because many times, we let go of so many small things, thinking, "Now, this is all right, this is acceptable because the Lord will understand." But in the eyes of the Lord, a sin is a sin. Doesn't matter whether it's big or small, a sin is sin. So, during this Christmas, during this Christmas season, let this mind be within us. May the Lord continue to bless us. Let's bow our heads and pray. Our loving Father. Lord, we commit ourselves to you during this morning time. Lord, dear, just like the scribes and the Pharisees, there are so many things that are not pleasing in your sight and that we have those things in our lives. Lord, we commit our lives into your hands. During this Christmas season, give us the grace to have a life where Christ is at the center of it all. If Christ is not at the center of our lives, help us to put him in the center. Protect us so that we are not hypocrites like the scribes and Pharisees. Lord, protect us so that we are not outwardly beautiful but inwardly filthy. Lord, look into our hearts and sanctify us and purify us. May these days be days of blessings. Continue to speak to us. Strengthen us and bless us. In the name of Jesus, we pray, our Father. Amen.